Okay. Welcome, everybody, to the Bellevue City Council Special Meeting for December 2nd. It's special because we have special guests with us today. It's also special because we will not be having any public comment. Before we begin, unfortunately Deputy Mayor Malakutian and Councilmember Janison is unable to attend, so can I have a motion to excuse them?
I move to excuse Deputy Mayor Malakutian and Councilmembers on.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and Councilmember Lee will be joining us shortly. So there'll be no public comment, as I said, but the meeting will be livestreamed and recorded through Bellevue TV. The purpose of this today is to bring our council together with our favorite District 41st and 48th representatives from the state and to return to hosting our -- everybody in person. This is the first time in a long time that we've been able to do this. So we are anxious to share with you our legislative agenda and to hear your top priorities and things that you want us to focus on and maybe even support for you. So with that, let's do a roll call.
Mayor Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Newenhouse.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
As we heard, Councilmember Lee will join us shortly.
So our microphones are normally on, which is green, and you can hit them and turn them red unless you're speaking, so if you choose to speak, make sure you turn your microphone on. So before we do introductions, let me tell you about today's agenda. We'll be talking about our legislative priorities, and then we'll have a few questions for you, time to ask questions. Then we'll ask to hear about a priority bill that you are sponsoring or supporting in 2025 and that we should be aware of or that we might be able to support. And finally, we will leave the room on a short tour of Bellevue's Grand Connection Crossing Project. So we're going to go ahead and go around the table and do introductions. I want to start by introducing our staff, Casey Kusumba-Halsey and Genesi Atkins, who worked very hard to pull all this together today, so thank you so much. And we have Brianna, who will be introducing herself as we go around the table. So let's start with you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Lisa Wellman, representing the 41st Legislative District and Chair of Early Learning K-12 Education in the Senate, as well as sitting on Energy, Environment, and Technology, Ways &amp; Means, and a number of other workgroups. One in particular strikes me as being particularly of interest to Washington State now, and that is Lieutenant Governor's Legislative Economic Development and International Relations Work Group. And as an import-export state, we're very concerned with what that holds for the future.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Van Dennis Slatter, State Representative, 48th Legislative District. As you know, parts of Bellevue, Redmond, Kirkland, Clyde Hill, Medina, and King County, Eastside, of course. And I chair the Post-Secondary Education and Workforce Committee. I also sit on Environment and Energy and Appropriations Committee. I do also sit on Alternative Fuel Task Force, and sustainable aviation fuels is something we've been sort of thinking about, and I'm very proud to be on the Higher Education -- National Higher Education Task Force. So we've been looking at how do we move students and people who are looking for work and dignity in work through the system, not only through K-12 and higher ed, but also how do we reskill, upskill people, and also think about digital equity. Thank you.
And Representative Slatter served on the Bellevue City Council for one year, for those who don't remember.
Thank you so much. It was an honor serving with you as well.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Tana Sen, State Representative from the 41st. In the legislature, I chair the Human Services Youth and Early Learning Committee and serve on the Innovation, Economic, and Community Development and Veterans Committee and on the Appropriations Committee. And I also chair -- co-chair the Behavioral Health Joint Legislative and Executive Committee. And I am honored to be serving on the Governor Lex Transition Team and chairing his Subcommittee on Childcare. And in fact, we're having our first committee meeting at Lake Hills Boys and Girls Club to discuss childcare, so that is very exciting. And then I would be loath if I didn't mention and give my thanks to Katie and Genevieve and Diana for hosting this bomb cyclone refugee here at City Hall. It was wonderful to be able to be here, and you really opened up the City Hall to the public, and I was pleased to be one of those, and thank you very much for making the beautiful place available to all who needed it. So, thank you.
Yes, good evening. Milin Thai, State Representative of the 41st Legislative District. Very happy to be in this space with you in person. Currently, I'm serving as the Deputy Majority Leader of the House Democratic Caucus. I'm also sitting on healthcare, finance, and civil rights judiciary. Outside of that, I have the privilege of serving on Children and Youth Behavior Health Work Group, really dive into the important topics of the years, really building capacity to support our young people. Outside of that, I'm also serving as an Oversight Committee member on the civic legal aid, which has been proven significantly important, especially providing those services for the people in the city of Bellevue. So thank you for having me here.
Thank you.
Sorry, Amy. Sorry, Amy.
Turn off my button, Amy. Good evening. I'm Amy Wallen. It's a privilege to be here, thank you very much. A lot of qualified folks doing a lot of great work along with you all, so it's a privilege to serve with you all. I am -- I've been in the legislature for six years now, and I serve as the Chair of the Consumer Protection and Business Committee, which deals with insurance and business practices in our state, protects consumers. I'm also on finance with Representative Thai. We are the revenue-raising arm in the House Caucus, on the House side, and I also serve on the Civil Rights and Judiciary Committee, and I joined that committee in the interest to work on the gun violence issues affecting our communities. So I'm on the child support workgroup task force that makes recommendations about collecting child support, and I also serve with Senator Wellman on the Economic Development and International Relations Committee, which is especially important right now with some soccer coming our way. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Brianna Murray. I have the honor and privilege of serving as the city's contract lobbyist, which means I take direction from council and get to work with all of you directly on the ground in Olympia. Thanks for having me at the table today. Go ahead, Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilmember Lee, if you'd like to introduce yourself.
Thank you. I'm Conrad Lee, Councilmember, and also former mayor for a time, and I appreciate our former councilmember coming back, and also thank you very much for being with us. This is a great opportunity, great time, for Thanksgiving, for the help you have given us over the years. I've been here for -- on the council for 30 years, so I know how much you have done for us. Just look at how Bellevue has prospered because of your help, your partnership. So thank you very much for what you've done. So there's not much for you to say, except I look forward to working with you, continuing our good relationship and partnership. That's a great opportunity in front of us. We know that. Thank you.
Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, it's really great to be here tonight and seeing old friends, and it's been a long time. I came to council in 2012, and I was mayor in 1617, which is intriguing, and I'll get to this when I talk about it, what happened in those years in terms of affordable housing. And I'm just very pleased to be here, and Bellevue is just amazing going forward. And one of the things that's really helpful is, and great, is we all work together. We don't fight among each other in the legislature or within the city. We work together very much, and there are other cities involved, of course, and we work with all of those. So we -- this is something that's very, I think, unique to the state and probably a lot of other places, but I'm just really excited to be here tonight and looking forward to talking with you.
Great, thank you.
Just want to add my welcome to our delegations. I get a chance to see you all around town. I've seen you all in action. Really appreciate all the hard work that you put forth for our city, and I really appreciate the partnership and the inspiration that I get in working with you. I have been on council for less than a year, so I still get to call myself the new guy, and I get an extra pass on the mistakes I make.
And after the first semester.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, it's okay.
I'm gonna milk it for all I can, but so far, I mean, this is, you know, a really great city, and I'm thrilled to be more a part of the community and thrilled to work and support all of you in that effort, so welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you all for being here. It has been a while since -- I think it was actually in this room the last time we had our entire legislative delegation here. This is wonderful, and thank you for everyone who showed up today. That's outstanding as well. It's not because of us, I think it's because of our guests here today, so thank you so much.
Yeah, we don't get this.
No, we don't. This is great. But again, Jared Newenhouse, councilmember since 2018, and just thrilled to talk about some of our priorities and listen to some of your priorities this upcoming session as well, so thank you again.
Thank you. And I'm Lynn Robinson, Mayor of Bellevue, and I want to introduce our new city manager, Diane Carlson. Give a little wave, Diane. So as you can hear, we all appreciate you very much and all the work that you've done representing our region and our city in particular. I know that Senator Cooter is not here right now, but I want to thank her as well for all the work that she's done and congratulate her for her new seat as Insurance Commissioner for the state. So we've all been grateful this last week during Thanksgiving, so I'm going to tell you what we are grateful about with you. Got four things to mention. First of all, the funding for the Mountains to Sound Greenway, that was wonderful. You helped us get a $2.4 million matching grant from the federal government, so instrumental in moving forward with that project. You've helped us secure funding for Raze Grants, $25 million, with the support of the East Trail Wilburton Trestle, and you -- many of you were there for the groundbreaking, thank you. The electric fire truck funding, which we were able to retain, thank goodness. And lastly, many of you are here for our mini-City Hall opening, and I appreciate your support of that and just being such an invested part of our community. So looking forward, the legislature has some challenges to work through in 2025, a little bit of a budget shortfall, if you will. We want to be partners in implementing and supporting our -- each other's respective visions, and as you're considering progressive revenue in 2025, we hope that you will include Bellevue as part of the conversations, and I will tell you that our cities need to be part of the expenditure as well. Residents don't recognize the difference between service delivery between cities and states, so it's really important that we work together to do a very good job of delivering all those services effectively. We're going to now turn to the Bellevue State Legislative Agenda for 2025, focusing on our key legislative priorities, which were just approved last month. And to start us off, we have Councilmember Hamilton and Councilmember Newenhouse, who will discuss our city's key priorities for transportation and infrastructure, and we'll take a short pause for questions, and it will be monitored by Brianna. So Councilmember Hamilton, go ahead.
Thank you. Really appreciate the chance to talk about this great project that we're contemplating here in Bellevue, the Grand Connection. And it certainly -- it's grand in what it can do for the city, but what is being contemplated really is a reasonable final design that finds the perfect balance between form and function. So if you don't know, the Grand Connection Crossing that'll go over 405 is a half-mile pedestrian and bicycle bridge, crosses the 405 right from right out here at City Hall, and connects our new live-work-play neighborhood of Wilburton. The crossing will provide a variety of safe options and connections for the state's second-largest urban center. It provides critical infrastructure to support the city's next phase of growth, spurring redevelopment and adding to Bellevue's vibrancy. It's a safer, more comfortable transportation option, enhancing the active transportation network through Bellevue, capitalizes on East Trail and the two-line investments. Also provides an active destination over 405, infuses the downtown and Wilburton neighborhoods, and ties downtown Bellevue into the 175-mile regional trail network, East Trail, that the mayor mentioned moments ago. So connects more than half a million Eastside residents. But I think to think of the Grand Connection as just critical transportation infrastructure doesn't tell the whole story. The Grand Connection Crossing is critical to supporting the housing growth that we desperately need. It's about in supporting our environmental stewardship plans by supporting walkers, riders, and rollers. It also adds some park elements to a part of the city that has limited options. And so it's a project built on public investment and leadership. It's a once-in-a-generation project that will create iconic and a desirable destination, but while memorable, it's also doable. And so I think what we're contemplating here is just a very realistic approach. Thanks to private investment and partnership, we have Friends of Grand Connection that was formed in 2023, it's an organization -- for organization momentum through private partnership, integrated redevelopment, and philanthropic commitments, and we have several of the representatives from that group here today. There are two projects for funding. You'll hear more about when we take our tour. One, we're hoping could be funded in a potential transportation package, and the other, we are hoping could be funded through the capital budget. So we have our downtown integration project. It's a reconfiguration of City Hall Plaza to improve access, sightlines, public safety, and usability for public programming, further tying in the Grand Connection Crossing into the downtown core. It'll serve 40,000 daily users once it's completed. So we are requesting 900,000 be allocated through the capital budget for this component of the project. Then we have the Grand Connection Crossing over 405. It's catalyzed by private and public investment. Bellevue recently completed the preliminary design work for a signature crossing, providing a safe, attractive destination and a travel option for folks walking, biking, and rolling. So we are aggressively working to complete the project by 2028, pending partnership funding. We're hoping for a sizable investment in the transportation package if one comes together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Councilmember Newenhouse, and then we'll pause for questions.
All right, thank you. Staying on the topic of transportation, maybe not quite as sexy as the Grand Connection, but just as critical. So my comments will be rather short, just because you have all done such a great effort over the years to continue to keep 405 and 520, which is vital corridors in East King County and Bellevue, top of mind. There's still a lot of work that needs to be -- needs to be done there. So in 520 and the 124th Avenue interchange, that interchange, as you probably have driven it, it gets very congested. Not only very congested, it gets very dangerous. There are a lot of collisions happening in that interchange. The 520-120th Avenue interchange project will take a lot of pressure off our major interchange, and it utilizes funding that was already allocated in connecting Washington and WashDOT's wrapping-up design and right-of-way acquisition right now. We are hopeful that any transportation package that would continue to move forward, that this project would be a project that would have forward towards construction. And then the other one is the I-405 Master Plan Projects. As you can see, when you're driving on 405, again, I'm sure many have seen it, but specifically talking about Renton to Bellevue is under construction right now, and we need to deliver the current work that is already underway. WashDOT has indicated there is a $45 million shortfall right now for that. So that is significant, and at a minimum, that shortfall needs to be addressed this session. Beyond that, the 405 Master Plan has improvements such as the Northeast 6 Street Connection Extension and Coal Creek Roundabouts, which are currently delayed 10 years, and are needed to accommodate the growth that we're seeing in Wilburton and in South Bellevue. Mayor?
Thank you. Brianna, I'll let you go ahead and manage the comments and questions.
Yeah, absolutely, and I welcome any of you to offer some comments. I wanted to just open up the comments by saying that as the council worked on developing its legislative agenda, one of the pieces of advice that I offered was a very clear picture of the challenges in the transportation arena. I think all of us sitting around this table understand that there's not enough resources to deliver the projects that were funded in the Connecting Washington Package or the Move Ahead Washington Package, and I think what we want you all to hear is that we're here to be your partner in finding the solutions to that really large problem, because transportation is what we started off our discussion with today, and it's vital and it's important to the Bellevue community. So I just wanted to sort of open it up for comments, but also really reinforce with you all that we recognize the challenge that you all have before you this upcoming session. Any thoughts?
I have a thought. We know that there's going to be a vacancy in the 48th Legislative District for both a senator and a House member potentially. Currently, we don't have anyone in our delegation that's on the Transportation Committee. It's going to be incumbent on all of us to encourage those who fill those positions to serve on transportation. It shouldn't matter, but it does, and so I think it's incumbent on all of us to encourage our delegation to have representation on that very important committee as these decisions are made.
Senator Wellman?
Thank you. I remember back in the day when we --
Excuse me, Senator William, I'm sorry. Mr. Zimmerman, am I going to ask that you not make noises while people are talking? That's disrupting the meeting, so that's your first warning. Okay, I'm sorry.
No problem. So I do remember a while ago when we were looking for funding, additional funding for Bellevue for the park, the downtown park, which has been a joy to see, used by the community year-round. It's just been -- I show it off to many people as we show, but also the idea that there was this connection throughout Bellevue, that that would lead to Maidenbauer Park and the waterfront as well, and now I think I'm seeing that you're connecting across the 405, if I understand correctly, that will be part of this, which I think is to the credit of Bellevue, to see the vision and to, you know, see it in part and see it develop. I don't know if you know that my cousin, years before, when I first came here, probably 20 years ago, worked in the city of Bellevue as -- she worked as an accountant, but she was consultant, and often talked about this, one of the best-run cities that she had ever worked for, and it seems to me that we continue to see that. So it's very exciting.
Rep. Sen, you want to close this out, and we should keep moving.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll just quickly say, over the summer, I was at a conference at the Maidenbauer Center, and dashed over to the opening of the new bridge, the bike trail over on the other side of 405, and I -- it was right in the middle of the day, and I've never been so scared to cross the street in my entire life, and so I completely applaud and understand, like, in my soul, how important having a safe pedestrian, and I love the rolling and biking lane across 405, and so I'm excited to see this project go forward.
Quick question. So we're doing a tour.
Yes. So we'll be able to see a little bit more about this?
Yes.
Because I'm curious about when you said realistic, because I know when I was on council, it was a very big project, the Grand Connection. We were envisioning it coming all the way from downtown park all the way up to 405, so I'm curious about that change. But one other question, we paid for Mountains to Sound Greenway. Have we completed that with that last payment, or is there more to --
We're working on it. We're working on east from Bellevue College to where it is.
And I don't mean complete the construction, I mean the funding.
Completed that phase of the funding.
Completed that phase of the funding, so there's more still to come. There's another phase. That's what it sounds like.
I think, yeah, there's many other phases, but we completed that phase.
Okay, excellent. And I just want to underscore my colleague's comment about Transportation Committee, because I was on the Transportation Committee, there's a lot of work on there, so.
Yeah, you will see that the Grand Connection and the Crossing are kind of phased elements, and so we'll make that clear to you. So next, we're going to hear from Councilmember Stokes, who will be speaking about affordable housing, followed by Councilmember Lee, who will be speaking about a funding request for digital permitting.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'm really excited to be here, and I'm talking about affordable housing, something I've been involved in even before I came here in 2012, working with -- I worked with Bill Henningsguard, and he was a founder of Eastside Pathways, and this is one of the things we wanted to work on. And it's taken us a long time in Bellevue, but I think we've done really great, and I want to talk about how -- what we're doing, what we need to come up with, and how we can work together even more with the legislature on this. You know, Bellevue is implementing and embracing state requirements around housing and affordable housing. The city's newly adopted comprehensive plan envisions a welcoming Bellevue for all people, and that's a concept that goes way back. Housing was a critical component in comprehensive planning, and I'm proud of our commitment to a new Office of Housing, very much directed towards that. Housing was a -- this new office will coordinate and improve access to affordable housing and increase available funding for affordable housing. Bellevue is laying the groundwork to implement these efforts by updating the city's affordable housing strategy. And you notice I use strategy, not plans, because plans sit in there, you know, you have the plans, but strategy, and it's really -- this is a very, very huge step for us. We're going to, you know, really increase the available funding, and that's the goal for affordable housing. Bellevue is laying the groundwork to implement these efforts by updating the city's affordable housing strategy. Our approach is responsive to the community output -- or input by weaving totally locally tailored solutions and investments with state law. And again, it goes back to working with the state and working with the law and everything and with the communities around us, not just Bellevue, but the communities all around us that we all represent, and this is something where we can make really great strides. Bellevue is addressing affordable housing from a citywide lens, how it connects to transportation options, job access, schools, services, and continuing an extensive work, collaboration, and innovation with our partners in the private and governmental sectors. So all of these pieces have to come together to make this happen, and we can do that. We understand there are both shared and unique circumstances to addressing affordability in Bellevue compared to the rest of the state. That's why we are asking you to consider flexible funding options that supports early length planning, pre-development, and acquisition to promote affordable housing development. Bellevue seeks additional resources to be invested in housing to serve individuals making 0% to 50% of the area median income. This is housing for the lowest income, which cannot be met by the market or incentivized through zoning. Bellevue is planning for nearly 27,000 units of housing affordable up to -- from 0% to 50% AMI, and that is really, really, really important. This is over three-quarters of the city's total housing growth in the next 20 years. As you prepare for committee days next week, we encourage you to attend the House Housing Committee meeting on December 10th. And, I mean, you know all about that, but I just want to emphasize that. You will hear about the work Bellevue is doing to address this critical need through land use policy and local funding. Despite these efforts, we cannot meet this housing need without state support and resources. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate you being here. You know, the subject I'm going to be talking about is digital permitting. Sounds kind of mundane, you know, not sexy at all. What does that mean? I believe that process is very important, especially if the process that has common regional interests. Process not limited to just what goes on to each jurisdiction, but it's common for everyone. So this permitting is important because it cuts across the board in supporting local economies, housing, environmental protection, and trust in local government. Also, it's a key component in helping Bellevue realize its long-term growth plan. So this process, it's very, very important that we need to develop so that we can have the lowest cost for the most benefit. I always believe in return on our investment, and so thank you in the past that you have helped us. So this is the ask. The ask is, I want to just throw it out there, $2.7 million request, so we look forward to helping all the regional entities, not just for us, but it's good for us all. Bellevue is a leader in working with the development -- Bellevue is a leader in working with the Development Committee. The services we provide are predictable with low, with open access. We have transparent timelines that reflect direction from the legislature to streamline and improve project permitting. A key reason for that is our leadership in electronic permitting services, which we launched in 2002 and is continuing. Bellevue is a founding board member of the East City Government Alliance, which serves 17 local jurisdictions. So if we can improve on it, if we can lower the cost of the project, it's going to be much more beneficial for the improvement that we need to have. So together with the East City Government Alliance, we are working to make it easy for our customers, both developers and residents alike. Like other cities, we are working to implement Senate Bill 65290, which is, thanks to you, a common goal, common project, good for all the communities, for residents. But it has to be done right, has to be done with low costs to make it workable. So to successfully do so, we need continued state partnership, have the tools needed to achieve compliance. This funding request will, number one, modernize technology for permitting process improvements; two, create standardization for our customers; three, allow the software to be customizable to fit local conditions. So modernizing and streamlining local project review isn't just a directive from the legislature. Creating consistency and a transparent process provide predictable and predictability that benefits the city, developers, and residents to help address our affordable housing crisis in Bellevue, plus all the other things I mentioned, environment, energy, whatever. So thank you very much for listening. Hopefully, we will be able to, you know, work on this and benefit for all of us.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Okay, Brianna.
So I think these are our last two items before we're going to depart and go on our little tour. So I think if there's any comments or questions on these last two items, and then each one of you will have a moment to also highlight something that you're working on. So I want to start by just highlighting a couple of things about these last two items, see if there's any questions or comments. I have worked with all of you on trying to really move the needle on affordable housing the last couple legislative sessions, and I really appreciate the persistence with which you all attempt to move things through the legislative process. And I want to highlight something that Councilmember Stokes said, which was funding for early planning, pre-development, and acquisition for projects. One of the challenges that we've had in moving things through the legislative process is there's a preference for projects that are later on in development or further along on development. But what we're missing is the opportunity to secure land and get projects up and running. So we just highlight that as a strong component for us to look at how to focus resources this next session. And then I would also just for, you know, to add on to what Councilmember Lee said on digital permitting, just to highlight that we're making that request jointly with multiple other communities. So hopefully, this isn't the first time you've heard about it. Are there comments or questions on these two items? Rep. Ty?
Yeah, I wanted to, I'm trying to figure out if that's a comment or a question. So bear with me a little bit as I'm trying to form this thought in my mind. Certainly, affordable housing is important for our city for multiple reasons, and you know all the reasons. But for me in particular, number one, we have, we continue to house one of the best school districts in the state, and we are very proud of that. And it would be difficult to argue the reason is that one of the best school districts in the state is because of the ability to attract educators, is the ability to attract supporting staff to the school district. And more importantly, our city has been, done so much groundwork as far as the foundation to attract family with children who want to come and stay with us. And with the, with the crisis of so-called affordable housing or retainable housings or whatever the buzzword of the day is, we all know we are significantly need of housing. So I am, I'm very happy to hear that the city of Bellevue is really looking, not only just talking about the plan, or not only just kind of like around the edges when it's come to housing for the people. And this, the second part to my sort of comment is that we do not want to be the Aspen of the world. We need to really realize that the people in service sector, the people who work at our grocery store, the people who provide like the fundamental childcare services, I mean, we cannot, and those people need home as well. And so I think, I'm curious about the strategy that you're working on, and I'm curious how we too get to be informed, because I believed in, in learning from one another. I mean, at stake, we're certainly looking at, bigger picture is probably not the right word, but like multiple other places that facing exactly the same problems, but the ability to hear from different cities of your innovative idea, creative idea of solving these crises. Personally, I hope that I can learn from what the city of Bellevue is thinking of and moving forward, so that we can take that as a potential way of creating opportunities, providing pathway for other cities who is facing exactly the same, the same issues. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And what we'll do is ask staff to provide you all with our updated affordable housing strategy and maybe some of the data from what we've accomplished so far. Thank you.
Senator Wellman?
Thank you. We had a meeting this morning with King County Council, and where we had an opportunity to hear their recommendations and asks. But a part of what I heard this morning, and I'm going to ask a favor of you, as you expand your housing, it is, it is an anathema to me to hear that we are expanding our landfill in King County, when we are in a developed country and we are not using our solid waste management for energy production, at a time when we need every source of energy we can get. We had a little talk about, you know, looking at cryptocurrency and now AI, which is cryptocurrency on steroids, and we're running out of juice. We need the energy. And we do have a Growth Management Act. We're projecting for this growth, but we are not backfilling, to use an expression for solid waste management. So I would love to have your input to them as far as how are you going to handle this increased, you know, needs that we're meeting on the part of people coming into our state. But I don't think that everyone is meeting it, you know, equally in terms of all the various things, services that need to be associated with that. Even as we talk with schools, you know, we're, we know where they're projecting 25-year projections and seeing that. And so I would very much appreciate your help there. And in terms of the digital permitting, as a systems analyst and computer programmer in my career, I love the idea of, you know, what you're doing. Are you in any way talking about how it might integrate with the one Washington plan, which has been, you know, Washington has many, many different agencies, and each of those agencies until now has had their own systems development. And frankly, it is a major challenge. But it would be wonderful to see that you're connecting, at least so that the state is aware, because why should Bellevue as a single city have the digital permitting? If we can standardize on it across cities, it would be helpful to everyone, I think. So just, if we could, I'd love to talk-
That's a great suggestion. Something we need to be looking at.
Continue to talk with you about it.
We have the East City Alliance, but what's the next step? You know, how we connect with other folks?
Yeah, yeah.
Based on your suggestion.
Thank you.
Rep. Sen?
Yeah, just on that last point.
I was curious about the digital permitting. So it's across jurisdictional boundaries, so there are other cities involved, right? And do we, so I know that Bellevue in particular has been thinking about how to streamline development timelines and permitting, because it's very long. That's been a very common concern and complaint of developers that, you know, and people who are just building, that they don't have a very, you know, it's not very easy, timely. And I know other cities have experienced this as well. So I really appreciate that there's some solutions here. And so I guess I'm curious about, is this like the, sort of the number-one thing that would make a huge difference in permitting timelines? Number two, how are we looking at the outcomes of this? Like, once we're having this, you know, what are the measuring, what are we measuring to say that, yes, this is working or not working? Do we have people who are advising the development team? I'm sure you do, from the community, that are sort of saying that this is like in the top three things that would be of help? And, you know, and you mentioned that it would be very supportive for affordable housing building, and I'm really curious how that would work. So those would be my questions.
We have good answers for that, and we just had a meeting on it last week, so we will provide you with all that information.
Yeah, and just to clarify, so you all passed a bill very recently, Senate Bill 5290, that has specific timelines and deadlines that the city needs to meet when processing permits. And this technology is a helpful component to making sure we can comply with that? And I think the type of outcomes that you're looking for are also components of that 5290.
So just a quick follow-up then, if that's okay. So this is sort of to meet the goals that we've set in law, and so that's good and-
But we've gone beyond that.
Okay, that's the question. Thank you.
We've gone beyond that. One example is that we are incentivizing affordable housing by speeding up their permits.
Okay.
Faster than non-affordable housing.
Okay, interesting. Okay, yeah, and I'm looking forward to that information. Thank you.
So I think we want to now hear from each of you, but we do have a time limitation. And so they made me the bad guy. But, you know, during session, when I'm testifying before many of the committees you all are chairing, you guys are the bad guy. But would love for each of you to comment on an effort you're working on this upcoming session that the city should be aware of or potentially supportive of. And I mean, if you can fit in more than one in 90 seconds, then I suppose that's okay. Are there any volunteers to go first? Go ahead, Rep. Sen.
Thank you for the opportunity. I will mention two quickly. One, I have a proviso asking the Joint Transportation Commission to look at the workforce of the now and of the future around electrification, EV charging, EV vehicles, fire trucks, charging infrastructure, to make sure that we have, we know what the workforce is, what the needs are, and make sure that we have the education and the training to meet those needs. So that would just be asking the Joint Transportation Committee to do work on that. And then the second one I'll mention, I'm working on a school levy bill that would bring an additional $2.3 million to the Bellevue School District by just making sure that we're counting in our levies headcount and not full-time equivalents. So what that means is that if you are, have a student who does running start, because they're not full-time at Bellevue School District, then they're not counted in the local levy formula. But they're still a student who needs counseling and who might be playing on the sports team and maybe, you know, rides the bus occasionally. So we want to be able to count each student, and if you have early learning or other special education students, we want to be able to count all of those students to fully fund the, to utilize the local levy for funding. So that would be bringing $2.3 million to, each year, to the Bellevue School District, and of course, schools across the state, not just Bellevue. So look forward to working on that.
Great.
I can go next.
When it's come to budget requests, I am looking at a budget request to retain, positioned at the Office of Public Instruction. We had built a mental behavioral health literacy at the state level. However, we do not have the, the individuals like Poussette, liaison, and expert in that particular curriculum, the literacy project, spreading out to our 295 school districts in our state. We, we approved funding last session, however, it was only one year funding, and so I'm looking to, to continue that funding as, as helping school across our state building that capacity. Secondly, as to, to your point of alluding earlier, is looking for a way to have more progressive revenue for the state. As you also aware, I have been the prime sponsor in the House since Representative Noelle Fram moved to the Senate and became the Senator. I have been and will continue to be the prime sponsor of the short version of it as a well tax. But you also know, in 2025, 2023, Senate passed a study for viability and feasibility done by the Department of Revenue. And so we have that recommendation coming out from the Department of Revenue. The policy on this version of well tax will follow that recommendation so that the agency who will implement the policy will be able to implement it with fidelity.
Sure. Okay, thanks. Yeah, I'm going to call him. I got like 90 seconds. I'm like, you know.
No, you did, you guys are-
We're keeping it short.
I haven't had to cut you off.
Oh, you might be ready. I'm just kidding. But yes.
Time to wrap up.
So one of the things that came up for me as you were talking is that I've been really thinking about, how do we use land? Land is the most expensive thing when you build housing. And so how can we address that question? And it's been addressed and worked on by so many people, including former Speaker Frank Chalk, who's done a really incredible job of that. But I'm, being a chair of higher education and college and workforce, you know, I get to meet and go see a lot of colleges around the state. They have a lot of land. And there's a possibility that maybe we could see if there's a way we could use college land for affordable housing, for worker housing, because we have a need for city employees and teachers and so many other people that might not be able to afford to live in some places where we absolutely need their work. So I don't have a particular bill yet, but that's something that I'm very curious about, been working on. I think that it's important that we do fund, you've heard, educational policy. And last year, I did a levy bill, adding criteria to the levy, but I don't know, there's another bill by Representative Ramel, so trying to support how we're going to get dollars across into our different school districts, because there's a huge shortage of dollars, especially for, let's say, special education and maintenance and all of the things that schools need right now, and they're short of it. They're closing schools. In fact, Bellevue has consolidated several schools, so really looking at how to weigh in on that. The other piece is the workforce. You know, I chair Workforce Committee, and healthcare workforce is incredibly needed across our state, mental health, behavioral health. So I'll be prime sponsoring a school psychologist bill. As it turns out, we need school psychologists, and they have fellowships that they do when they are in schools. But they don't get paid the amount that, that they, not all schools pay the same amount. So we're going to try to see if there's a way to build more fellowships in rural areas and urban areas and kind of equalize that, so we have not only more workforce, but also more school psychologists around and available. And also other healthcare workforce bills that may be of interest to cities if you're trying to build out your behavioral health crisis centers and other things. I think there are innovative ways we can partner, so I'm really curious about your challenges with workforce and how maybe the state could address and help address that. Did I make it?
Okay, I'm going to do a lightning round. So guns, we have a problem with being stolen from vehicles, so a safer, more secure, safe storage bill on firearms. Our Housing Authority bill that we did to fix how housing authorities could partner with for-profit developers to access cheaper financing, because right now, interest rates at 6.025%, unknown permitting times, leads to insecurity in the market and inability to develop housing. So got to fix to help with that, with that piece. And also, we'll be looking at a warranty system like they have in Vancouver, BC, so where we don't have to mess with the condo laws that upsets some of the advocates, but actually, there's a warranty that condo developers can purchase. Purchasing a condo is your entry into- they have in Vancouver, BC, so where we don't have to mess with the condo laws, that upsets some of the advocates. But actually, there's a warranty that condo developers can purchase. Purchasing a condo is your entry into homeownership and an access to wealth building that we're really missing out on. Consumer protection, we need to remove medical debt as part of your credit score. We've got elders being taken advantage of with crypto schemes and others, and there's a whole body of work going on there. And then cancellation of pet insurance, when your pet has a pre-existing condition, you shouldn't be able to just take their premium all their life and then withdraw their ability to acquire pet insurance. And then the FIFA thing, definitely working on the soccer thing. And then finally, that bill I ran before about giving, diverting some state revenue to cities so that they can hire and retain public safety personnel. So those are my projects in 90 seconds or less.
That was almost as fast as a lobbyist.
Well done. So we're, whoa.
Well, I'm scared to escape.
I am so sorry.
No, that's, that's fine. But for the general public, I would like to share that we are going to face significant challenges in terms of our budget this year. You may have heard about it, and, and it is true. For your information, we are the only state that, that requires a four-year outlook. And we believe that that is good accounting, that is really good money management. And so that four-year outlook, because of that, we have the best, we're the only state with a AAA rating, which allows us to get bonding at, at a cheaper rate. And so it all works for the best. However, looking at four years with the inflation that we have been facing has been a major challenge, and so it's, you're going to see a very tight budget. Our paramount duty as a state is education for our youngsters. And it's more important now than ever, as we see because of so many changes with AI technology and other things, that the jobs of the future are changing. And we must make sure that when our kids leave our K-12 system to move on to the next phase of their life, that they have what they need. So you, you will see bills that speak to that this year, as well as funding for education, you know, bills. And you've heard a couple of them. I have probably at least a half a dozen that we'll see. Some of them are companion bills, but we'll be looking, you know, be looking at that. I've had wonderful discussions with Melissa DeVito, who is your CFO in your, in your school district, spending hours with her on looking at what really are the costs, the operating costs of schools. And so we've pulled that from schools across the state, because it really is very different in school size and whatever, from different locations. But we know what operating costs are, and we will be going after making sure that we're funding to the extent that we, that we can, fully funding our education responsibilities there, as well as making sure that with digital equity, that kids are supplied, supplied no matter where they live, going after that last mile with the federal money, going with the bead money for broadband, making sure that our kids, no matter where they live, have adequate service at home. So exciting things.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to adjourn to the concourse. We have just enough time to grab a coffee or a hot cocoa and a cookie, and then we'll head upstairs, and we will continue on.